Meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board of Tuesday, December 7, 2021. And ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. For those who would like to join tonight's meeting via Zoom, the Zoom app, either on computer, tablet, or smartphone, tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to join tonight's meeting and don't have access to one of those devices, but have access to a telephone, you can dial 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. Tonight's posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and others reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I will start tonight's meeting by asking if there's any public comment from the board this evening?
No.
None?
No. The only comment I want to say is to thank you to everybody who made the tree lighting on Thursday possible, so the school department, EPW, fire, police, people at the school, providing the band, the band director, and I'm sure I'll leave somebody out, I don't mean to, so this is the catch-all for everybody else. But anyway, the rain held off, it was a beautiful night, and it was a great start to the holiday season, although by that time, of course, Hanukkah was already halfway through, so we got you in the middle of things. But it's a good way to start, start the season in general, so thank you for everybody who made that possible. Any public comment from the public? Okay, any announcements?
No announcements.
I guess I should ask you for public comment, probably should turn to you from, not that you-
Yeah, I don't fit in one category.
Not that you would hesitate to tell me you have something to say, so. Okay, so at 7:00 PM is our workshop regarding the old primary school. Community meeting on the landscape design for 30th School Street with interested stakeholders led by our now hired landscape architect Ray Dunnett, the landscape designer who is with us tonight. We will have a discussion, we'll have a presentation from Ray, or Mr. Dunnett, I should say. And then we'll have a discussion of the timeline of the projects, select board goal for the annual meeting, next steps, and, and public comment, you know, public participation if anybody would want to, and it's encouraged if people want to speak. So with that, Mr. Dunnett, I would leave it to you.
Thank you. I prepared a presentation which I'm-
It's popping up right now.
It's behind me. Okay. So I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present our initial assessment of the site, share some of the goals that you all have had for this site, and some additional goals that we had, and then open it up for comment and discussion. Next, please. Next slide, is it coming? Oh, there we go.
Sorry.
I'm the only one from our team here tonight to present this work, but we're working with, oh, okay, let's go back to our agenda. Ours is a little bit different than yours was, Tom, but we'll, we'll make it all work out. We'll first talk about the timeline of this project, talk a little bit about the history and the context of the site, review the existing conditions and our assessment, and then talk a little bit about opportunities that present themselves for this, for this project. Next, please. This is for the public's sake, our, our team, we're sharing the workload with Vertex Engineering. Andrew Shagnon will be assisting us with engineering elements of the project, and we have a cost estimator which will prepare costs for this master plan level design. Next, please. Our timeline is thus, we're, we're looking to wrap up this project in March of next year, beginning of March. On Saturday, we had the, the pleasure of walking the site with the select board to get their input, which brings us today's meeting number one. We will prepare, after this meeting, we will, we'll solicit for whatever public comment we can get to help influence the design work. We'll prepare two or three concepts of what we've heard from the community, and present that at a second community meeting in January. And then, following up that, we'll once again submit for people's comments on, on the concepts, and prepare a final concept in February. We'll present in early February, then prepare cost estimates and have the report done by early March. Next, please. So the history, history of the site's very interesting, and it's something that we can incorporate into the design. The old primary school was built in the early 1920s. The aerial photograph with the orange elliptical shape is the old primary school in 1947. School Street was used for a lot of recreational activity, including tennis, and they had a field day there, from what I've heard. So there's a lot of interesting history that we can interpret in our, our design. Next, please. The site is in what I would call the downtown core of Lunenburg, close by to where we're standing and sitting today, in Town Hall. The aqua-blue colored buildings are all, I would say, town-owned properties or public facilities. The Verizon Switching Station is a private company, but the other buildings shown on the, on the project in gray are public property, so there's, there's a mixture of, of public space and private space in this, in this, within walking distance of this site. Next, please. The towns spent a lot of time thinking about this, this site. There was assessment of the primary school building conducted several years ago, and Vertex did a conditions assessment of that actual, the actual school. And as we all know, there, discovered plenty of issues there that, that either need to be addressed or discussed. Next, please. There was a survey conducted by the local civil engineering firm to also look at like how the parking could be reconfigured. We have, this is a great resource for us in our design because it has all the topography and the existing conditions layout. Next, please. The town also benefited from some, I'm assuming pro bono, design efforts from a local vocational school, generating some of the ideas that were contained in the RFP for repositioning of the farmer's market, how to, how to address the parking issues, and creating playground and that kind of thing. Next, please. So from a public safety point of view, the building is in poor condition, activities which we don't want to see occur here, so there is a, a level of concern with security and safety. The building hasn't been occupied in a long time. There's, there's water damage, and, and obviously the windows have been broken into, and, and that kind of thing. Next, please. The site itself is interest, very interesting. There, there are flat spots, there are very steep slopes, a mixture of vegetation, but we have some nice green lawn areas, and some, and some woodland vegetation, which can be expressed in the new design, and maintaining some of the landscape character that's already there. Next, please. One thing that's quite obvious to, I think, everyone is there's a large expanse of paving out here, particularly the entrance to, to School Street from Mass Ave. Next slide, please. We, we, we estimate this to be sort of a 40-foot wide or 50-foot wide opening, which is not necessary. And speaking with the town, one of the reasons why this is so wide was because of a former fire, firehouse located on the site, which is no longer there. This is something that we'd like to address to clarify the vehicular circulation, so that there's a clear in and a clear out. Next, please. We looked at several, these are, following slides are just some mapping that we did. The soils are very good here, sandy loam. This is farm, farm country out here, so we're working with very well, well-drained soils. Next, please. This diagram shows what is currently impervious paved surfaces in blue, and the rest is a pervious surface in gold. So the majority of it is pervious, which is great from a sustainability point, but we do have a lot of impervious area. Next, please. This is a diagram showing the topography. The light green is the flattest slopes, and the dark bluish-green are the steepest slopes, and then we have some moderate slopes to the northwest corner. Next, please. Utilities, there's a water line that runs to the school, evidenced by a couple of fire hydrants that are along School Street. We also have some overhead electrical service shown in the, in the, in the maroon dashed line, and then there's a big septic field adjacent to the school. Next, please. This slide shows sort of the areas of, of currently that are, are surfaced with lawn, and then the darker blue is more kind of wild vegetation, trees. Didn't really see any invasives, but it, it's been left, you know, more unkempt. Next, please. So in our, in the RFP, the goals were stated by the select board and the town, what they wanted to see at this site, and of course, we're looking for as much community input as we can possibly get, but these were some of the goals and opportunities to create historic signage that interprets the history of the site, possibly look at a shade shelter, a place for concerts or movies, and a bandstand, possibly an amphitheater. The RFP addressed a multi-use lawn area, sort of a flexible space, playground, comfort station, strolling paths, comfortable places to sit and possibly have a picnic with picnic tables and, and benches. Four-season interest with landscape, trees, and plants. In our site walk the other day, Michael Ray mentioned the, the concept of a pollinator meadow, which is shown here, which may be very interesting. And then lastly, adequate public parking for events and, and the farmer's market, especially. Next, please. So just to graphically illustrate what some of these opportunities could be, interpretive historic, interpretive signage is a nice way to educate children, townspeople about the history of the, you know, could be the history of the primary school, and when it was constructed, there's a, a wealth of old photographs with the historical society that we can, we can use to, to create high-resolution images and, and educational text. We could possibly talk about, we also can interpret any sort of ecological plantings that we have out there, just to provide some interest, to, you know, reason to come, come walk the paths and, and learn about the site. Next, please. Farmer's Market has always been, currently it's at the Ritter Building, lawn, but discussion has been, you know, how can we create a space for, for farmer's markets on a weekly basis, and, and accommodate the vehicular, the vehicles that come, come to buy their, their vegetables. Next, please. Small playground was, was one of the, the opportunities mentioned in the RFP. It can, if, you know, we talked about, you know, is this the right, right spot for a playground or not? That would be up to the community. There are other playgrounds in town. Consideration could be given to doing a small nature play lot with just logs and, and rocks for kids to climb on, not so formal like some of these other slides, with slides and, and swings and that kind of thing, but just something more, as more environmentally sensitive in, in this nice environment. Next, please. The, the southeastern part of the, the site is a, is a depression. There's a very steep slope from the, from the school down to kind of a bowl, which lends itself well to doing like an amphitheater for performances and, or even like having a movie night, which we didn't really talk about, outdoor movies. Next, please. Sprinkling around some picnic tables for people to enjoy, a picnic might be nice. There may be, you know, several picnic tables. We don't expect like a huge jamboree of, of picnickers, but, you know, the lawn could be used for picnicking as well. But these would all, we would propose having these all accessible for folks that are, and, you know, have mobility issues, or are in wheelchairs. There are special tables for that kind of thing, so. Next, please. Strolling paths. We see an opportunity for a, a route around the whole site that's accessible, can be used for, you know, just having a conversation or getting some exercise. We feel that the site grades are appropriate for, and we can design compliant, ADA compliant walkways. We're not, we're not planning any kind of grandiose paths, but, you know, just something, you know, could be a stone dust path, or something that's a pervious surface. The, the key with all of our designs, and we've had input from the DPW and others, is that the site is easy for the town to maintain, and, and we've done lots of parks, and we've, we focus on, on low-maintenance design. Next, please. Concept, or an idea of grass pavers was brought up as possible way to, for a location for the farmer's market. This, this surface allows vehicles to drive on it without damaging the grass. You only have a farmer's market maybe once a week during the summer months, and then the rest of the time, it's not used for that purpose, so it just becomes a lawn. Next, please. There was some interest in doing a restroom. We've introduced the idea of these Portland, Portland Lou structures, which can be either connected to the septic system and the water system, or be installed off the grid. They would just need to be maintained, you know, very rarely. They have tanks which need to be cleaned out, and, and water, water supply that needs to be pumped in. They're very easily maintained. There's a graffiti-proof surface, it can just be hosed down. The bottom grill is open so that there is, there is air movement through these things. It's basically, you know, a, a nice, inexpensive way to do a restroom without a lot of infrastructure. Next, please. I just wanted to share one of the projects that I shared during my earlier presentation before we were awarded this project, because it has some similarities to the old primary school. This is Pine Bank Promontory in Jamaica Plain. The house shown on the left was a beautiful Victorian house built in the 1800s, but over the years became abandoned and was used for, you know, a lot of unwanted activities, had the same issues with windows getting broken into. The, the city struggled with programming the building, very expensive to restore. We went through a, a very long and deliberate public process to ultimately come to consensus that the building had to come down. But we thought it was sufficiently historically important enough to commemorate its existence, and the way that we did it was creating a granite band that, which outlines the building. And you can see within that outline, they have concerts, they don't do farmer's markets here, but they have concerts and performances sort of inside the house, if you will, and then around the park are sprinkled interpretive signage about who lived there, and what they did, and, you know, sort of the history of the house, and some bench seating. And to the, to the lower right was sort of where the entrance of the house was, so you knew kind of how the house was oriented. But it, it's a very, it's a very successful project. This was with the Boston Parks Department, and they're very good at mowing grass and blowing leaves, and pretty much, and emptying trash, and that's pretty much all they need to do here. Occasionally, the trees need to get pruned and, and, and whatnot. So we thought of this as like, sort of a similar issue with the old primary school. If it, if it, if it came down, we could, you know, still keep it in our hearts and make it a very important part of the history of the site. Next, please. So some of these questions were if we had greater attendance, but for those folks that are on the Zoom call and watching this later on the, on the public access channel, we'd love to hear from you to get more input before we put pen to paper. Some of the questions that we have is, what are your current concerns with the space? What would you like to see happen here? What do you not want to see happen here? And any other input that folks are willing to share would be greatly appreciated. We have been in conversations with Heather about posting an online survey. We, we just, we're going to get a landing page tomorrow. We'll put that up online so people can, can send in their, their responses, and we'll bring, we'll bring those responses back to the public at, at the next meeting, and, and let you know what we heard from the community. In the meantime, if folks want to send an email in, in the next slide, we have Heather's, Heather's email here, our town manager, so you can, you can reach her, reach her that way. That concludes my presentation for sort of the beginning of this process. Like I said, next steps will be to kind of, kind of collect all of this feedback, and particularly the feedback from the board tonight, and move forward in developing a couple of concepts. I should mention that there is also a working group with town officials that will also be reviewing our, our ideas for security concerns. You know, they want it to be well-lit, with good visibility into the site, and also maintenance from the DPW perspective. So we will encapsulate every, everybody's opinion into, into two concepts, and then get feedback from those. So.
Happy to just hang on to the microphone?
Yep.
So I'll open it up to the board, if anybody has any questions about the presentation.
I do not.
Questions, no.
This is true.
No questions, college.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
The Jamaica Plain-
Yeah.
-outline, that, that building, what has been, first of all, how long ago was that done?
Phew, maybe 15 years ago.
And it's still there in the same fashion now?
It's still there. The materials that were used were very, you know, masonry-
Sure.
Very New England-proof.
Right, I mean, but it, so it still exists, is my point.
It still exists, it's still programmed.
What is the, what was the reaction, or the response of the public to the, you know, the footprint of the building being commemorated?
Taking the building down?
Look, and, and, well, that, and then also being memorialized with the outline of the footprint, I mean.
It's been-
Do people know what it's there for, or is it just a design to them, or do-
Well, there are interpretive panels that show, explain the design. Show, you, you can go up, I don't have a picture of the interpretive panels, but they, they show what the house looked like, when, who lived there. You know, there was a lot of history of Jamaica Pond with, they harvested ice there in the winter, and they show skating, and this, this was a lucky landowner that had this beautiful view, but when the family, you know, left, they, they gave it to the city, and it just-
Do you know how it's received by the public? That portion of it, do people comment, do people comment to the people who, or is it?
I, directly, I don't have that feedback, but I know for a fact, when I go there in the summer, people use it, and it's a beautiful place. There's shaded strolling paths. It's, it's, it's identical in many ways to this project. People, people are enjoying it, and they do have adjacent, they have concerts here, they're more classical-oriented concerts. They have like a big rock, rock and roll festival in the field right next to it, where there's like food trucks and vendors, and, you know, traffic kind of spills over, but there have not been, you know, it's, it's well-loved, I, I know it's, it's, it's-
I was actually referring just to the historical piece, but, I mean, I just wanted to know what the reception was of that historical park.
No, I, no-
You don't know, that's fine.
No, no complaints. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I haven't heard directly, but I know that people love that park.
Okay.
And, and part of it is the, is the design. There, there, there are also a set of stairs that go from the promontory down to Jamaica Pond that were part of the original estate, that were reset, and it shows like dates of when the stairs were built, like in the 1800s, and we, we had to design a special railing so skateboarders wouldn't go down the hill, but, but it's just a beautiful, I mean, it's like, it's kind of part of Jamaica Pond. But, but it's just a beautiful, I mean, it's like, it's kind of part of Jamaica Pond.
I'll open it up to members of the public if anybody has any questions. Does anybody? Okay, then we'll open it up to the Zoom meeting. We'll ask for comments at the end. I just, I just want to know if anybody has questions right now. Who do we have?
Hi, hi, this is Anna Lockwood from 91 Main Street. I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
All right. So at some point, there was some discussion about preserving the building and creating a pavilion. Has that been discarded or not pursued for some reason? I just want to get, you know, what, what happened with that thought?
I will answer that. That has not been, nothing's been discarded. This is like the first public meeting. So that's one of the things we talked about. Obviously, there's, there's obviously structural issues with doing that, but it has not been discarded if we can find a way to do it. And this is just a idea and, and presentation meeting tonight to gather that kind of information.
Right. So has Ray Dunn's been asked to also explore that idea?
Yes. Yes, we have.
You have? Can you talk a little bit about that? Because I don't think you touched that during your presentation.
Well, in our previous meeting, we did discuss that possibility. The, the, the one safety concern that has come up is, is sightlines into the building. We can, similar to the Pine Bank project that I showed, we can, we can build a pavilion into like a low knee wall. But we, we want to make sure that, you know, like the expense of like restoring the structural, you know, the, the structural integrity of the building may be prohibitively expensive. But we can, we can look at a ways of preserving parts of the building that are closer to the ground that won't, won't hurt somebody. And while opening up views, you know, for security and safety. So the, in terms of like building, taking a, a, a piece of the, you know, keeping like the full two stories, that's something that we can explore. And just put a number on it. But, you know, previous studies have looked at those assessments. So we would probably, probably look to those to see how, how we can incorporate it. There's, there are many, many things at play here. So, you know, getting sightlines into the building are, are important. Another project which we've done, which I, I've shown the select board at our last meeting, which you can probably see online, I think.
We will post it to the landing page with the.
Okay. Was another, was another project where we sort of gutted the inside of the building and left the walls up and made a park inside the building. We could, we could certainly do that as well. Keeping like the roof structure and, and the walls and, and building a park inside. But to, to meet everybody's needs, you know, including the, the safety folks here in town. You know, we want to keep it open and at the same time preserve as much of the building as possible. Does that answer your question?
If I can just add to that, Ms. Lockwood, one of the things that's important, which is why it was in his presentation, is, is a historic perspective. What that perspective is, is open to different ideas and it's going to be, it's going to be impacted by what the other uses of the land will be, what the cost will be, et cetera. So we want there to be some historic perspective. The project that he just mentioned where they gutted the building, that was a steel girder building that enabled the walls to be taken out so that the rest of the building could stay. This, this school doesn't, is not built like that. So if you take out the walls, then nothing is going to stand, right? So you'd have to build an infrastructure to hold that up. So there are certain ideas, although it was, it was floated. I mean, there are things that have to be done to the building to make that feasible. That other project, it was there. It was just a matter of, you know, peeling away pieces.
Taking the insides out, yeah.
Right. The, well, there, you know, I have a, I. Okay, so just to clarify, that is an option, but we don't have a number. We don't have a cost, what it would cost to do that. Is that correct?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay. Is that going to be a cost that will be explored?
In, in some way, yes. We, we want to get obviously the, the community's input on what they would want to see for the building. But, you know, you're bringing it up is, is that one comment. So we can certainly look at that.
Well, you know, I, I, I think there is a part of this that it's beyond us, the, the comment to, you know, public comment, which is one that is our bylaws, which is we, that building is part of our historical, you know, architectural preservation district. And, and we, we have, like, we have a process regarding that. We can't just demolish a building without regard. So I think we owe to the town as a whole for a bylaw that we already passed. So we have, we have a bylaw in place that we expect that we are going to go through that process. I don't think that we should require any other public comment to follow the bylaw and to honor what the intent of the bylaw was. And, and I think that would be a service to just say, oh, there's only one comment here. And another thing that I'll say about the comments thing is, you know, I have, I have always been interested in town, in town government here, but I haven't always had the time. And a lot of times, you know, I always felt like there were people that were diligent and competent enough or part of the process. Therefore, I didn't have to think about it or participate as, as I normally would if I didn't think there were competent people in the body. So, you know, the fact that I'm here and we have a, and I'm part, part of the Parks Commission, you know, maybe our citizens and our taxpayers are thinking, you know, parks are going to be, are going to be part of this process. They've been invited. If they feel like they want to participate, there is a value to their input, they'll come. So not having the number of people only means that people are participating. In my view, that the other citizens believe that we have a good, efficient body. So we shouldn't dismiss one comment as not being relevant. I think that is, you know, that's a sidebar. But I think we have a part of the bylaw that we should, we should take, you know, take consideration for it. I've seen buildings that are just a, you know, a wall structure and they're like pavilion and they have, you know, different ways to support that. I, I think we owe to have a number for that and not just say we'll be part of it and we'll be part of as a way to, to check a box. I think we, we should, we should fully explore that. Not just because of the bylaw, but it will serve a need in the town. One thing that we have looked in the TCP Passus project is that we don't have a community center. We have a senior center, we have a teen center. And all the needs that have come in the process of the TCP Passuses, really, we need a community center. We need a space that's flexible into its use. It's not a library, which, you know, the library also does a great job. So we could take some of the intelligence that we learned from the TCP and go, you know, maybe it would be an add-on to our town to have a pavilion here. And maybe some of these requests that we have had for the TCP won't be as much there. I mean, for TCP, we have had, you know, needs of kitchen, space for artists, teen center, community, senior center, storage. Like there is a lot of that that can serve in this current building. So we do owe to look into that. There's no reason to raise a building and then start looking to the next building to fulfill some of those needs. So I just want to make sure that this is not just a, something that we are going to look into it and just as a way to check a box, but we are going to seriously look into it as a serious possibility for the various reasons that I mentioned, which is, one is our bylaw to do that. And the second is we do have community needs that needs a space with a roof overheads, that has heating, that can be flexible into use. That is something we desperately, we really, really need. The whole, you know, the entire study of the TCP boils down to that. We need a community space that's flexible that we can use. There's no reason we should not explore this. So that's what I had to say about that. And I hope, and we paying more, closer attention to this development. And I hope it's looked, you know, more serious, more seriously, or I shouldn't say more seriously, but, you know, giving a thought and to maybe developing that. My, my next question goes to the select board, which is, once this project's developed, is it a thought to turn this over for, to parks? Or is this going to be a piece of property that's, will stay under the select board?
That is something that we will be deciding along this, along this way, along this path of progressing with the project. I mean, I could see it, I could see it being turned over to the parks. It's not going to have a like programming area right now. The, the farmer's market is not done by parks on the, on the Ritter Building. And the band concerts aren't done by parks. So it could stay with the town, it could go to parks. I, I don't, it's a discussion to be had. Nobody's determined that, we haven't even started the discussion.
Right. And, you know, Mr. Lawrence, a lot of the things that have not been done by parks doesn't mean it should in the future not be done by parks. If you go to other communities.
I totally agree.
Okay, so if you go into other communities, those events are usually done by parks. What has happened in the past is we were a small town. Parks was, you know, kind of held a property. And now, you know, we're, as we grow, there's greater need. So, you know, farmer's market, everything you just listed is usually, you know, managed and maintained by parks. And, and I say that because I think this would have been a good project that, you know, I've, we've been, we've been invited to participate into this meeting. But, you know, perhaps parks would have a different perspective that to bring to this process that we have not been invited to do it, other than this last meeting, which we are here, we have two representatives in it. But yeah, you know, and with that, you know, for example, playground. You know, playground is something that it does, if we talked about maybe adding a playground here. You know, playgrounds are being undertaken for every town. It costs a lot of money to maintain, it, it's supervision. And I do hope if, once we cross some boundaries, that's clearly a park. You know, parks are more part, the Parks Commission, there are elected officials in this town as well who'll be invited to be, you know, to participate in this and how to define the projects and how to go one way or the other. But yeah, so those are, those are the questions and comments that I have so far.
Thank you. Just a few comments back. First of all, the landscape park that Mr., Mr. Dunnet's responsibility is not to the town bylaws. That would be the select board and other members of the town. So I, I don't want to put him on the spot, asking him about the town's APDC. So we, he will be aware of that through us. But his charge was what was posted and listed and what he responded to. So everything in there that he presented in his presentation was exactly what we asked somebody, all the applicants, and we had three applicants to, to present.
Oh, but that is the same thing to say that, you know, like someone coming to do Marshall Park shouldn't be aware of our town bylaws regards to conservation commission, to the conservation.
No, the Parks Commission should.
No, the, the architectural.
Well, they should be aware of it to a degree.
Right, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, is, is Ray Dunn's aware of our APDC? And just as the same way as anyone working around town should be aware of the local bylaws regarding a conservation committee, with a conversation commission, which is local to our town. So I think that is.
Let's say that he's sufficiently aware to do the job we've asked him to do. Let's put, let's put it at that.
Okay.
Okay. Secondly, I don't think, I, I, I think you took his comment that yours is a comment as being dismissive and all he was doing was commenting that this process, which is opened up and we're asking people to comment on, that, you know, that's a voice and depending on what people want, that's what we're able to do. There, there are infinite number of permutations that could be put there with what he said in his presentation about things that could happen at that site. We are not going to cost analyze a myriad of possibilities. We are going to discuss.
But let's do that, let's.
Hold on a second, Anna, 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 please let me finish.
Anna.
Anna, okay. So all I'm saying is that he outlined and mapped out what his process is going to be. We're going to get feedback and he's going to work up things that are feasible within the context of what people have asked to do and what people have commented to do and come up with two, I mean, maybe we could get three proposals. But that's what we're going to cost. We're not going to cost every single piece of thing that can happen there because it's just not feasible.
But Tom, one that it belongs to town bylaw, it should be looked at. And the APDC is a town bylaw and that should be one that should be. I'm not saying go after every single scenario, but the APDC and, and that building belongs to that. That is what needs to be considered, period.
There's a process and we are doing that process. We will go through.
It's not a process, I, I.
It's a process.
I cannot say every single scenario, but there is a town bylaw.
Yes.
That we cannot simply dismiss that exists.
And nobody's dismissing it. I'm telling you, we're going through the process.
Okay.
Is there anybody else on Zoom?
No one's unneeded.
Anybody else on Zoom who wants to ask a question?
Colin.
Please. No, 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 because you're here, I'm going to ask only for people at home to hear. If you could just come to the mic, yeah, yeah, please, Colin, thank you.
Colin Dwyer, 76 Main Street. I think you can design a beautiful park, which is not necessarily to say that it's going to be a successful park. A successful park is one that people use a lot, okay? And since you have some experience in this matter in terms of just land use, what would your comments be on this location in terms of the successful or the, the elements that set it up for success or the impediments to success for this space?
Thank you, that was a really good question. The success is based on the activation, how, how, how the site is programmed, what it's used for. We want to get people there to use it. How we do it through movie night, concerts, farmer's market. That will activate, that will activate the, the park, you know, yoga on the lawn, any kind of flexible activity. We're not going to be doing sports there. This is not the appropriate place. You want to grab a coffee and, you know, stroll amongst the historic interpretive signs to learn about the site, have a conversation, have a picnic there. We want to put in as much activity opportunities as possible, but we see it as a passive recreational space, not, not active recreation. I think that, that, that's important, very important for the town to consider. We don't want any activity there at night where bad things might happen. Except you need the night for movies. But if you have people there, it will, it will be, you know, a, a very successful project, I think. So does that answer your question?
So it sounds like food programming.
Programming, yeah, exactly. And the, and the town's already identified a few programmatic activities. And that, that can also, I mean, we're asking people in our survey, you know, what they want to see here. So what, all that community input will, you know, be incorporated into the design so that we draw them and their families to the park.
And is there anything about this particular site that you feel has a disadvantage to success, just like through this location?
No, I think it's a great location. It's right in the middle of, in town. I don't see any, anything, anything prohibiting success. You know, we, we've already identified a few sort of technical issues in terms of, you know, there's huge expanse of paving out there, which can be reorganized and, and re-engineered to be more efficient, reduced in some ways by increasing places for people to park during high, high, the big drive times like the farmer's market and whatnot. The town does want to get the farmer's market off of the Ritter, the, the Ritter property. So this will become the, the landing place for that. But no, I honestly, I don't see, see any negatives here whatsoever.
None from Zoom.
So, open it up to comments to the board.
None of this time.
Yes. Do you have one?
I do, but go ahead. Okay, just, there are going to be a certain number of scenarios considered, one of which has been the idea of preserving that building to, in some way, shape, or form, some portion of it, et cetera, but the idea, having now seen it in more detail for the first time in a long time this past Saturday, I truly had impressed upon me how much of a disaster that thing really is at the moment. So, I think in general, even from the beginning though, the idea that this could be a the community center, it could in no way, shape, or form be a, in my opinion, be a four-season community center, because I think the most ambitious we might be able to get about it is to preserve some major portion of the building, but still have it be open air, which is going to preclude its use in the middle of winter as some kind of a community center, short of a complete rehab of the whole building, which would be absolutely prohibitively expensive. So, you know, I think, I suspect that this is going to range somewhere between perhaps marking it in the way this Jamaica Plain building was marked, or maybe more ambitiously, as Ray alluded to, some sort of knee-wall-high type of thing, perhaps with a canopy structure overhead, but the idea of even open air, where, I think it was in Lawrence, that other project, right? Yeah. I mean, that, as Mr. Alonso pointed out, that building was a steel-framed building to begin with. This thing, it would not be self-supporting if everything were gutted from the interior to make some sort of open-air market. It would require the construction of some sort of steel girder interior skeletal structure, which also sounds very expensive. So, I just want to say, while my heart is very sympathetic to historical preservation and building preservation, that is tempered substantially by the practical considerations of cost and, well, mostly cost, really. So, nothing's been precluded or eliminated as a consideration, and I'm certainly still listening to all options, but I do see that being very costly to try to preserve a major portion of the building.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, a couple of comments. So, I think that the, there's a little bit of history here, and so, you know, if I can just take a 30 seconds to explain it. Back in 2019, we did conduct a survey at a special town meeting to ask residents what they wanted to see at 30 School Street, and we provided them with a variety of options, and it came down to overwhelming support for this location being converted to a park with some form of parking. And so that's the direction that we are, that we've been moving in. The Select Board, we did vote unanimously to submit a request to the APDC to demolish the building. And so that is standing out there, that it is our, it's this board's intent to tear the building down. And I am extremely vocal in my support that I think that that is the necessary and right thing to do. You know, I think that one of the, I think this project starts with the idea that we're going to tear down a building, and then it says, what are we going to do with the property once the building's torn down? And I think the intent is not to leave a rubble pile there and to turn it into some space that can be used by the community, based on the needs that have come out from different members of the community. You know, as our town has grown, we've grown in density in certain areas of our community. And so, you know, we have, you know, I would estimate about 1,000 residents at least that don't have any yards, that live probably in the Walem area mostly. And so what I think this park provides, and these are some comments, I think that what this park provides is it provides an opportunity for those residents of our community, while most of us have yards, I think it provides an opportunity for people who maybe don't, but who live in a really rural community to come to a place, center of town, where they can meet with maybe their families and have kind of a little get-together. I would like to see, and I mentioned this during our walkthrough, I'd like to see some grills that are built in into the park, just a handful in very safe locations. I think that that would help promote those residents who maybe don't have that yard space, or the residents who don't have large yards to accommodate a gathering of 20 or so people. I think that would be a really good thing. So my, one comment is grills. Another comment is, I understand from the security perspective of having a line of sight into the property, which you cannot do when a building's at the very beginning of that property, and so it seems that the only solution is to not have a building there. I'm not in favor of finding a way to spend millions of dollars to leave some frame of a building up. I don't, you know, given what I do for a living, my profession, I don't think we can do that for less than a million-plus dollars. We're probably going to be looking in the upwards, I don't want to throw random numbers out there, but I've never seen a project where you remediate hazardous material and then also construct a bunch of steel, which we know is 100 times more expensive today than it was a year ago, to then, you know, make a building stand. So I would not be in favor of leaving any remnant of the building standing, but I think it would be a great idea to perhaps during that tear-down, take some of those brickwork that's already existing, and to reuse that perhaps as that outline for the perimeter of the building. That would be a great way to recycle material, and then, you know, incorporate it into a future design. And then my other comment is two more, dark sky compliant, I think that that's something that's really important, is to make sure that whatever we do for lighting, that it's dark sky compliant. And I, I'm not a huge, because we have playgrounds in town and kind of all situated in different parts of the town, I'm not so much in favor of another playground playground, but I think the idea of a natural playground, given our roots, you know, using some form of logs and rocks, things that are native to our community, that that, you know, gives a pretty cool idea, and if my goats are allowed, I'll bring them and they'll have a good time. And then I did have a comment about care and custody as well, that was actually the first thing I wrote down, but I think that as our conversation in this develops, that perhaps that's something that we should discuss, once we have a more solid kind of plan of how this fits in with care and custody.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Anybody on Zoom have any comments?
No.
So, my final comment is, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Dunnet again. One thing that's been the prevailing sentiment in town for several years has been that we're not doing anything. This site has gone through a lot of discussion, it has gone through the survey that Mr. Jeffries said, it has gone through a lot of people's minds about what we could do, and we've tried to further that each, you know, progress each step along the way, and I think that this is a continuance of that, we need to progress to this. I didn't have any preconceived notions about what that site would be like in any formalized way, I had ideas like everybody else about what it could do, but we hired Mr. Dunnet for his expertise in coming up with ideas about how best to utilize that with the ideas that are presented to him. So I'm going to let him do that, that's what we've asked him to do. So I don't, I don't have anything like, oh, everything is okay, but it has to have this. I don't have anything like that. I want to use it so that, and I think, Mr. Dwyer, your question was excellent, an excellent question, is that really, I want to do the things that would make it a successful park, a successful site for the public, obviously since the public is going to be the ones who are invited to use it and the ones who are paying for it. So, whatever that becomes, and that's why we need input from the public. So if you are listening to this live, or if you are listening to this on a recording, send emails to the Selectman's Office, to the Town Manager's Office, you know, make sure people get what your ideas are. Is everybody's idea going to be incorporated? No, that's pretty straightforward. I mean, we're going to entertain as many things as we can, and the things that get hit on the most points, that's what we're going to try to address. But we want input from them. I do want to say, there was a host of, I want to thank Mr. Dwyer, I want to thank Ms. Lockwood and Ms. Menard, who's also on, and Mr. Bernie. We've asked people to participate along many committees, town committees and everything, and these people have showed up, and we thank them for that. There are many other people who have not showed up, and, you know, again, one of the things we hear a lot is that, I didn't get a chance to voice my opinion, well, this is the chance, like between now and when you, Mr. Dunnet starts, you know, get us your ideas about what you want to do. But in any regard, we will have, on his timeline, two or three, you know, possibilities of which we will choose one, so he can refine it, and there will, you know, if everything goes well, which is what we're hoping for, there will be a project to look at and vote on at the Spring Town Meeting. That's what we're looking for. And everything in between then and now, all the processes, all the bylaws, everything, you know, we're not going to look to cut any corners, we are doing this as methodically as we can, but the building has been vacant for approximately 15 years, and I think everyone is at least in agreement that something should happen there at some point, and I think this point is now, this is the closest I think we've come in a long time. That's a big backdrop for you, Mr. Dunnet, as you've heard. Yeah, good, that's, I'd like to hear that, I'd like to hear that. All right, so, we will forward, the Town Manager or any of us will forward anything we get to everybody on this group list, so that you are aware of it, and keep us apprised of anything you need, or all the plan or progress you're making.
And we'll coordinate with Heather on the January meeting.
Yes, yes.
I just had a question for Ray. Should there be a deadline for the survey, if you're going to be presenting in the third week in January?
Yeah, it's probably December. I mean, to stay on track.
So if we say the end of the month?
End of the month.
Okay.
That's three weeks, that seems reasonable. And this is a survey somebody can take from their home, right?
Yeah, it will be posted online, yeah.
Right, so it's not like somebody has to make it a trek to go somewhere to do this, it should be easy, so sometime in three weeks, somebody should, who wants to submit the survey.
I left the blanks, you know, you can put infinite amount of text in there as much as, you know, you need to explain, but what do you like?
Excellent. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunnet.
Thank you.
So we've discussed all three bullets on that, yes. Interviews, appointments, and reappointments, resignations. So we have a ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of, is this delayed?
Yes, that's what I was going to announce to the board, so I'm going to ask this to be tabled till December 21st. I've reached out to the Parks Commission Chairman about, asking if I can meet with the Parks Commission to review the candidate that we're putting forth.
Okay, so that will be on a future meeting. Town Manager report.
Okay. I'll start with our weekly announcement of existing vacancies. There are two vacancies in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, multiple vacancies on the Economic Development Committee, including one person recommended by the Open Space Committee, and one ex-officio member that is business owner, a regular member vacancy, and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacant position that is a resident of Pearl Brook Apartments for the Housing Authority, and one vacant position that will be jointly appointed by the Select Board and School Committee until the next annual town election for the School Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
When are we having the School Committee?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Right now, there are three applicants.
Yep.
And I believe we do have someone interested in the Housing Authority position, and while that would be at a future meeting. So anyone interested in serving on these committees can fill out the application form, which is found on the town website, and completed forms can be submitted back to the Select Board's office.
Is there stormwater on here that we've added?
Thank you for reminding. So, two stormwater positions, members at large, so residents at large positions. Current employment opportunities with town, there is a part-time benefited accountant, assistant accountant position, a digital services staff librarian position, which is part-time benefited, a assistant to the sewer business manager position, which is part-time position, a principal assessor, which is a full-time benefited position, a van driver, which is a part-time non-benefited position, and two videographer positions, which are part-time non-benefited positions. And more information on these positions can be found in the job postings, which are in the town website, and how to apply. An update on the principal assessor position, until the principal assessor position is permanently filled, I have appointed a temporary principal assessor that will be ratified by the Board of Assessors at their meeting on December 8th. Rena Sweezy, who is a longtime member of the Board of Assessors, until she had to resign due to moving out of town, will be serving in this capacity. Rena has many years of experience, she was the Groton Principal Assessor before retiring, and she's also familiar with Vision, which is our assessing software. An update about Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch District, the search to fill the executive director position has concluded, and the position has been offered and accepted by Ann Camaro. Ms. Camaro is currently the Assistant Director of Operations for the City of Cambridge, and prior to that role, she was the Director of Communications for a combined civilian dispatch center for the police, fire, and EMS for the town of Menard, and worked as a communication specialist for the city of Framingham. Ms. Camaro will begin the first of the new year, but will likely come in a couple days a week in the latter part of December. Last Wednesday, we received a notice of withdrawal from the Townsend Town Administrator. Per the district agreement, which they signed, 120-day notice is required by the withdrawing member. The financial impact of the withdrawal of Townsend from the district would be realized in the fiscal '23 budget, which would be at least $28,000 for each of the remaining members, not including any budget increases that are unknown at this time, because we haven't finalized a proposed budget. The Administration Board, which I am a member of, has a meeting tomorrow, and this topic will be on the agenda.
So they're going to go to their own private-
They have announced that they would like to join Pepperell's Dispatch Center. I believe that would still need to be blessed by State 911, so we'll see what-
Were they unhappy with the regional dispatch?
That is a question that-
Till tomorrow, okay.
Have we had any complaints in our Police Department?
Occasionally, there are, I mean, we have the Administration Board, we have an Operations Board, and a Finance Committee as part of the district agreement, and Operations Board generally deals with, like, protocols and procedures, so, but when those things are, come up, they go through. So there are occasional, but they're usually rectified and new complaints are.
Okay.
Yeah. Welcome. The Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch District Finance Committee created a three-member finance task force made up of one member of the Administration Board, one member of the Finance Committee, and one member from the Operations Board, to review finances with the district's treasurer and accountant. I volunteered to be part of this task force from the Administration Board, and the Berlin Town Accountant will be the member from the Finance Committee, and the Operations Board will appoint someone at their next meeting later this month. Complete Streets project update, the project is officially complete, and I submitted all the required reimbursement documents to MassDOT last week. The total cost of the project was $232,597.85, which was fully paid for through the Complete Streets construction grant funding, which we were awarded in 2020. With the four fiscal year, $400,000 eligibility limit, Ludenberg is currently still eligible for another $141,540, and we would be eligible for another full $400,000 in 2024.
Excellent. That project has been great, again, I really look at the, just the sidewalks and the accessibility from all of the town buildings, all the way from the Ritter across the street, through the center, to the Town Hall, to the Boys and Girls Club, to the Senior Center, and then there to the school and across the street to the library, it's really fabulous.
Yeah, I agree. I think the next step should be, and will need to be if we're going to apply for funding again, is we have to review our prioritization plan. is we have to review our prioritization plan and make any updates to that. So we'd work with an engineering firm on that, and then we could submit for that remaining funding. And yeah, the other, if you remember, the other area we wanted to focus on was near the town beach.
Yes. Crosswalks.
Yes.
Across the road.
Yes.
Not going to give up on that. Just like I didn't give up on the, on the big bags, by the way, which are very popular on pop, on social media. The big bags and the, for the trash.
Yes, we have to order more, I was told.
That's great. Yep. And hopefully the new large bags, we're going to get ones that fit. We talked about that.
Yes, yeah.
Because after I tore another one this week, I was like, can we really get ones that fit the bed?
Ritter and Town Hall Building Envelope Projects. At the November 9th meeting, I updated the board on the Ritter and Town Hall Building Envelope Projects and that the architect was in the process of designing and completing specifications for both of those projects. That evening, I said he would ultimately need a decision on whether the Ritter project would include the replacement of the shutters and whether the Town Hall would include the replacement of the chimneys and the metal ventilator. The architect is now at a point where a decision needs to be made. I have reached out to the APDC and the Historical Commission on whether they think those items have any historical value to the overall buildings. So the APDC is meeting Thursday, and this is on their agenda, and the Historical Commission on next Tuesday. So I would ask the board if they defer this to the 21st.
Right, and when, when you, when I saw that, before you let me know that, I was going, that was what I was going to comment on, is that we really want to get their input.
Yep, as did another Select Board member.
Wow, it just makes sense.
Yes, which I completely agree.
Personally, I think the shutters on the, on the Ritter probably, from a historical perspective, should be added. The chimneys here and the sheet metal is just something that, is something that, again, it's not used. There's no fireplaces in here, and I don't think we would use anything. It's something to upkeep, and so I, I really like to hear their input on it. But my feeling is like, I could see it without it, we'd close the envelope and make it better roofing, but what a tight roofing, that's my personal opinion.
I know some people like to think about costs, you know, as far, part of the overall decision. I know the shutters are custom order due to their size, so it's going to make them more expensive.
I understand that, but I mean, at least from an architectural detail, I could, you know, that's something that's visual, and something, the, the other thing is it could be done at any time. So you don't have to do it now, you could add the shutters later. Not going to change the envelope. With, with the chimneys up here, I mean, it really does affect, I think, the envelope of the building. Because it's just another, anything going for the roof.
The ventilator, yeah, they don't serve a function.
Yep.
Updates on town facility projects. The Senior Center projector project is now complete, and the Council on Aging Director has reported it as a wonderful addition to the center. So I'm sure a lot of people are enjoying that, having that added feature to the building. We have contracted with an electrician to begin the Town Hall wiring project in the basement, and the contractor will test and remove all the electrical branch circuit wiring that is either not energized or not being used, install additional necessary lighting in the basement, resecure any active electrical wires and boxes to the structural supports, and resecure any fire, fire alarm devices to the building structure, and label new circuits and any used circuits that need to be, to remain.
Is it going to be a revamp of the whole, everything down there?
So this should address all the critical features that are down in the basement. So a lot of the work is going to be troubleshooting as far as where these wires go to.
How long is that project slated to take? Because that's, that's a real rat's nest down there.
Yes, so I think the contractor thought it would, it would take a couple of weeks at least just to get through this, so.
Wow, okay.
ARPA funding. I met with Capital Strategic Solutions last week, and I'm awaiting a proposal from them for their services to assist us with conducting a outreach meeting to solicit feedback from the community on possible projects using ARPA funding, procurement and reporting requirements that will be needed until the end of 2026. So as I know, you may have heard Karen Brochu speak with all the reporting requirements for the CARES Act funding. That's taken an enormous amount of her time on top of her regular job. So she's had to do quarterly reports this whole time. All the changes with FEMA regulations and CARES Act eligibility has made it, you know, a nightmare as far as keep continually to reassess and reassign and reconcile all the, the expenses, so.
Well, given our free money, I guess there would be a lot more than reporting that.
Yeah, so.
So that actually heartens me, not dishardens me.
I have, I have two questions. If we can just go back to the town facilities, what was the value of the contract for the electrician?
It was less than $10,000.
Really?
Yeah.
That's, okay, that's really surprising. Wow, I just did a procurement and I got like two days of work for like $8,000.
Yeah, I was surprised as well.
That's great.
Yeah.
You know, ARPA funding, I, I mean, I'm not a fan of how the states dishen this money out. It seems to be a slush fund that is not going for its intended purpose, but neither here nor there. They seem to be, you know, I, in my conversations with Senator Cronin and Senator Kusmeric, I only talk about one thing, and it's town buildings. And that's any money we can get for town buildings, and that's what I keep saying all the time. And I was really happy to hear that we got $50,000 for hazmat remediation at the old primary. But I can't help but notice the, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going all around us, or millions of dollars that are going to our surrounding communities. And all I'm aware of is 50 grand so far. Do we have, have we given them a prioritize? I understand what's written here. Have we given them a list of like?
Yes, they have our list.
Okay. We're just not seeing any of it yet.
We received the $50,000.
We only have 11,000 voters, apparently, so.
They do, they do, they do have our list, yeah.
Okay, got it.
And that includes projects that were initially in the bond bill money, that they directly told me that we would never see that bond bill money. So those were part of that.
Okay, thank you.
The money we really want is that money for the culvert on Flaherty.
Yeah, hundreds of thousands.
That's big money.
Yep.
Invitation for bids, request for proposals. The Public Safety Building Chiller Replacement Project will be going out to bid this week, and proposals will be due on January 11th. In announcement of grants, the town was awarded the $10,000 Risk Management Grant from our insurance carrier. That will be covering the remaining costs for the Microsoft Office 365 licenses. So that migration, actually, it began yesterday. I think the IT consultant started because our DPW server went down yesterday. So it was kind of fast, tracked. So they will continue that migration. Unfortunately, we did not receive the Community Compact IT Grant that we applied for, for the network infrastructure equipment, but that was budgeted at the special town meeting. So proceed with that project.
Have we received any money for the IT, the compact IT?
Uh, yes, we have. I'd have to go back, yeah, we did a cybersecurity assessment.
Okay.
And our tax rate was approved on December 2nd. The tax rate that was certified was $17.19 per thousand. Skate park update today at the request of the Skate Park Group and the Chairman of the Parks Commission. Town Council and I met with members of the Skate Park Group, the Park Commission Chairman Karen Menard on questions both the Skate Park Group and the Park Commission had in relation to legal requirements surrounding the construction of the skate park and donation of that at the end. And so Town Council really went into explanation of a right-of-entry license that the Park Commission would issue to the Skate Park Group, their 501(c)(3). And in the end, the acceptance of the donation would be done by the Select Board per law. So the right of entry will address any relevant protections that will, for the town. But in order to stay out, stay out of the procurement law and prevailing wage area, we need to make sure that we don't impinge any certain requirements on them as far as being too involved in the overall project, which we've done.
I was very glad to hear that they've come to an agreement that that's where the park will be.
Yes.
Great.
That's excellent, yes. So I thank both of the, both the Parks Commission and the Skate Park Group for coming to that agreement.
An update on the Woodruff property. The environmental consultant hired to flag the affected areas where the extent of the cleanup work needs to be done and file the NOI with Conservation. We'll be ready to file by the end of December. COVID-19 update from the Board of Health. The total number of new cases reported as of November 27th was 62, and the current positivity rate for Lunenburg as of that date was 7.07%. In other announcements, the town currently has up the Giving Tree, and this is until Thursday. We have two angels left, so I'm inquiring if anyone out there would like to pick up an angel. The gifts can be dropped off until Thursday, so it'd be great if we could, oh!
We have zero, zero left. The last two were just picked up. Late breaking news.
Thank you, that's terrific, I'm glad to hear that. I also want to thank everyone that was involved in the tree lighting ceremony. As Chairman Alonso said, it was, I attended, it was a great ceremony. And, and to see the upper common lit up was really nice. They did a fantastic job doing that. So as I walked back, people were taking pictures in the upper common, and so it was really nice and great that a lot of the community showed up for that.
So there, your report and that last piece especially has led me to remember that there were three things I was supposed to announce, but I didn't at the beginning, so I'll do it now in the middle. Number one, regarding the Salvation Army. The Salvation Army has their, their boot drive in the center of town at the, and at the Whalum Electric Ave intersections this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. And there's the special mayor, mayor and chair of the Select Board competition, a friendly competition where the mayors of both Fitchburg and Leominster and myself as chair here will be collecting at their respective places in their towns. I will be in town center here on Mass Ave and the corner of Main Street and Lancaster from, I'll be there longer than this, but the, the competition goes from 11:00 to 12:00. So it's a friendly competition of who can get the most money of those three people, the two mayors and myself. So please come out and support that. Also, about the fact that there's a pancake breakfast tomorrow at eight, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Senior Center, so that's the, I think it's monthly, monthly pancake breakfast, so that's tomorrow. And you mentioned one other thing, oh, about the town center being lit up in the upper common. So Santa's mailbox is once again there. So any, anybody who wishes to mail something to Santa should go into that. That mailbox is being sponsored once again by the Lunenburg Ledger, and they are responsible for collecting those letters and sending them to Santa for his response. So if you have letters that you want to give, then that is the place to go, and we, the Ledger will make sure that they get sent. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome.
Old business, follow-up to special town meeting, including next steps related to consolidating town offices, school use and community space. Mr. Jeffries was not here last week when we discussed this, not last week, two weeks ago, when we discussed this. So we've left it on for you to give your, if you would like to comment on what you would like to see as far as post-town meeting, post-special town meeting.
Yeah, well, thank you. You know, I've had a lot of time to really think about, to really think about this.
Good, so we're expecting some great thoughts, you had extra time.
Well, you're not gonna, well, my thoughts aren't, aren't all that wonderful, no. No, I've had a lot of time to really think about how we, how we move ahead in this, and, and I'm really kind of torn. You know, I, I really, I really believe that the solution in front of us is a combined town hall and community center. You know, I think that no matter what, you know, we have to find, I think that this building, town hall, you know, keeping this floor kind of similar to what it is, that, you know, one of the, I had a good conversation, let me step back. I had a good conversation with, at the special town meeting, a gentleman named Tony Scollbrini. I think that was his last name. He stood up and talked about how he's preserved buildings and Patterson Air Force Base. So I ended up talking to him on the phone for about 45 minutes or so, and we, we shared a lot of good ideas. But something, you know, something we talked about was how, you know, the problem with the, my perception of the problem with the TCP design is that it's just not a sexy building. And that what people get more emotional about are the buildings like Town Hall, buildings like Ritter, where even though these buildings are not functioning how they were intended, that people drive by and they become a staple regardless of their use. And I think that, you know, something that, that, that Tony had said that I thought was a really good point was that the path forward has to lead with the sexy. And I know, I want to make sure I'm using good language here in case children are watching, although I don't suspect many are. But, you know, and the idea is that people are nostalgic, they have really strong emotive feelings about Town Hall and Ritter. And the recommendation was that if we present the plan with what we're going to do with these buildings first, that I think that, his view was that helps bring people on board. It gives, it, it will engage the community about something that there's a lot of strong feelings about, whereas there aren't many strong feelings about the TCP building itself. And that, that, going that route may be better for the town. You know, my personal opinion about what we could do with this building, I think that leaving this floor mostly the same, that, you know, perhaps this is a space where we could have a ceremonial meeting once or twice a year. The Select Board could, if this building were, you know, future use. And that the first floor probably would be great for artist space, et cetera, that this would probably be a great location when we're not in our ceremonial meetings to have some kind of exhibit space or whatever the building could sustain as far as people. But that keeps this building in the community use. It meets a need that we're not addressing in any plans we already have, which is how we address the cultural needs of our community. And then I think that, I think that when we look at the Ritter building, the, the limitation there, no matter what our feelings are, is parking. That, you know, any change of use is going to require our bylaws to kick in and, and which we're going to need adequate parking for, for office space. I believe that our estimates were that, based on the current usage, that we needed something like 20-something parking spaces just for the current uses to comply with our, if we had, if we were to comply with our current bylaws. So it seemed that a good approach, you know, ultimately, the town manager has authority over the rental and use of town facilities, and I don't think it would be outside of the town manager's authority to explore how we can put that building into a substantial lease, perhaps, that would be interesting to commercial interests for them to then preserve the building for us. And then have it as a, as a, as a building that then gets preserved. We don't spend any money, but it, it doesn't necessarily serve a municipal purpose other than we guarantee that the building looks the same. You know, when we, I think that one of the questions I reached out to the police chief about, excuse me, why I reached out to the police chief about was parking, was that, was traffic study given right now, leading down Mass Ave, going down Northfield Road. And, and so he did the study already. I asked him about this in beginning or, beginning part of October. There were a couple trailers that were put out, and then he sent me the results. And, you know, the bottom line, I think of, of his perception, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but his perception as well as my perception is that the current location of a TC Passios cannot, if it's converted to being a current school, and if these drop-off patterns don't dramatically change, that we, it cannot accommodate the traffic. And that although there's this idea of a school campus that due to traffic, the current trend that getting, taking a bus isn't cool anymore, putting another school over there, to me, is, is not a wise idea. Whether it's relocating Turkey Hill, whether it's putting in a, anything, to me, right now, with traffic, and, and the traffic studies seem to confirm that, that the traffic volume during school during school drop-off periods is extraordinarily high. And anyone who's in town sees that some mornings it's backed up down, you know, Leominster, Lancaster Ave, excuse me, backed up down Lancaster Ave. I've come out of my driveway toward the bottom of Mass Ave near Northfield, and I've also seen it backed up kind of halfway down the hill. How do we move forward? I don't know. I, I think that what we heard was that there is zero interest in a $30 million cost, there's no interest in the $40 million cost, talking with people, I don't think there's a lot of interest in the $23 million cost, but this is what this is going to cost. So, you know, the challenge is, do we work to educate the public that no matter what we're looking at this kind of money, or do we figure something else out? And I think that we, I think we may need to engage the public a little bit more over the next few weeks, and I don't, I don't mean months, but weeks, just to kind of really feel out some of those opinions about location now that we know money. You know, I think we need to get an idea from the public of, maybe they won't support a $23 million project, but knowing that that's what it's going to cost, you know, would a $15 million project, you know, be something that the public could support if it accomplished the majority of these needs? When we look at the current layout for the building that we were coming up with, you know, as we were doing the apples-to-apples, a couple things stood out to me. Number one is that, when you look at the cost, if you take the cost per square foot and you multiply it to all the different departments, when you look at the school department, and you looked, and you look at the cost for the educational programs, I think that that came up to over $4.5 million of the total cost. And then you think, well, could we rehabilitate Ritter to, you know, the, the main complaints from the school department was that the, because of the heating system, existing heating system in Ritter, we don't have walls that go to the ceiling. The lack of walls that go to the ceiling prevents the school department from having the privacy needed to, you know, discuss what they need to discuss. But would it cost less than $4.5 million to put in a new HVAC system and change some walls? My inclination is, I don't see how that cannot cost less than $4.5 million. You know, and so there, and, and if you, if that's a way to save some money, even though the school and the town strongly want to be in the same building, if we can rehabilitate Ritter for less than the cost of putting them in a new building, it may make sense to decrease that square footage that way, of start taking some of the uses that are clearly less community and more child-oriented, and taking them out of the building and see what that does to the overall cost. The other thing was, you know, we have this, when we were, when we, also in that design, when we were looking at PAC and all the community rooms and conference rooms, that if we created a variety of conference spaces, if we started utilizing the library, if we had a meeting room in Ritter remaining with any kind of rehabilitation over there, whatever the use is, that it could also decrease the need for community meeting rooms in this new design. And so if we decrease the footprint of that building, you know, we get to a better cost, and then we can meet these community needs. But I, to me, that's the only way that we can move forward. I know that we were looking into some other options about how we can reutilize other buildings and stuff, but that seems to be the only way that we can go forward. My opinion.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, everybody, we all shared our opinions, so we're not going to redo that here, but we wanted to get you the opportunity to say what you believe the next steps should be, although I think you went beyond the next steps, and you actually tried to actually solve the problems this evening, too. But I think, yeah, I think we have to just stay engaged, and I think a lot of those things that you said are what other people said. I think there's a lot of overlap in what we're looking at. To that end, next week, next week, we invited the TP, TCP, right? So next week, we've invited the TCP Building Design Committee, because we want to, we talked, all of us talked about modifying their charge. So please think about and write and send to me what you would like, the town manager will send the current one, right?
I put together written what currently how it operates and the membership, the makeup and everything.
Okay, so if you could send that to everybody, and then everybody can write their thoughts down about what they'd like to change, so we hit the ground running next week. I don't want it to last more than one night, it shouldn't. And we've invited them here to get their input as well. Any more on that topic? Uma Flowers Host Agreement, so last, last week? Was it last week already?
Yeah.
Yeah, we went? Yes, wow. So we went to their site visit at their request, at their invitation, which was very nice. It was their, their cannabis retail shop that was two days from being open in Pepperell. That was a very good site visit, and, you know, I, as one member, and everybody else can share or not, I agree or disagree, but I, really professionally done, nicely done, really thought about all of what they needed to do, certainly, you know, dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's as far as the Cannabis Commission, their request, and working with the town of Pepperell and their police department, and, you know, really know before they even opened exactly how this is going to operate. And it was really a professional, professional environment, so we'd be very lucky to have them have an establishment here if they're going to model this one after that one. To that end, we had some, a request for a modification in our host community agreement. Everybody should have seen that request. Has everybody read it? Basically, it just changes the, the payments that the company would make to the town. Instead of making it annual, it would make it quarterly, and a few more definitions about how that would be calculated. But that's, everything is, all the modifications from what we originally adopted was on that regard.
Annual reporting, little more description about the security piece under number nine, and...
And these pieces were all what they've already agreed to in the host community agreement to Pepperell, so there should be no, we don't foresee any objection from Uma Flowers themselves.
What's the, what's the financial projection on what 3% of their gross sales will be? How much money is the town?
I think they had discussed that.
They talked about it at their, at their host, their host public meeting. I don't remember what.
We'd have to go back and, yeah, to that meeting. They did kind of give a ballpark, I think it was, yeah, a conservative estimate.
Conservative estimate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Say it's $150,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, they, they were looking at like $4 million in sales, so that would be like $100, so 3% of that would be $120,000, so it's in that range. Four, four to four and a half million in gross annual sales.
So one of the questions I had for the changes is security stuff, everything seemed relatively minor. One thing that puzzled me was the addition of the approval of the manager for the facility.
Yes.
I, personally, I don't have any interest in, in approving a manager for a private business.
But we do it already with alcohol. Liquor stores, we have.
Right.
So it's not without precedent in this arena.
Sure.
I understand that you have, you may have a personal objection, that's fine, but it is, it's not without precedent, is my point.
Mm-hmm.
And this is language taken directly out of the Pepperell HCA with Uma Flowers.
Mm-hmm. No, no, I, I understood that.
If I could argue for it for a second.
Sure.
I mean, I didn't give a lot of thought to it, I was fine without it, I'm fine with it, but it gives you a contact point, so that the town kind of knows who's managing it, and so any manager change has to come to us, and we're aware of what's going on, that's not.
I mean, I, I don't have any problem with modifying the language so that we're notified of, you know, as a license renewed every year, however often that we're notified of who the manager is, so we have a point of contact, but approval of the manager, I just think is, is unnecessary, in my opinion.
So how...
I don't agree.
Okay.
But I, I hear Mr. Dwyer, I understand his perspective.
Were you for changing it or for keeping it?
For keep, I, I, I'm for...
Keeping it as it is, okay.
Keeping it as it is.
Mr. Frank, though, you have any opinion?
Yeah, I'm checking it out. I mean, it does say "if requested by the municipality," so I, of course, what's to stop that request from coming down the pike? I, I see what you're saying in principle, Mr. Dwyer, I do, but just being, this is, this is my first rodeo on, on host community agreements, so I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to...
This is only my second, because this hasn't been legal all...
But you have 100% more experience.
Okay, there you go. This is for a problem, right? I have 100% more, I've done one.
I, I, I think I'm going to, I definitely understand the reservation, but I'm going to, I'm going to, I say I'm all right with it the way it is as well, too.
Yeah, and I, I also understand what your position is, I'm fine with it the way it is, because we do it for alcohol, and at least, at least again, it gives us a touch point, and it does say "if, if requested," so...
Well, if it's unnecessary, and I guess, I don't hear anyone arguing forcefully for it. You're just saying, well, it's, it's okay, I don't care if it's in there, but does anyone really want it? Do you want it in there, Heather?
I think it would protect the town in the event we needed it. This is going to be our first signed HCA, so we're, you know, we don't know what to anticipate in the next five years, that's the term of the license, so I think it's a protection that's there if we need it. And that's what the whole...
I think that's why town council is there, I mean, this whole document is there to protect us financially as well as liability-wise, so we can say, you know, that we've checked this out.
And they, I talked to Valerio Romano today, they have no objection to this. The only thing they added was a change to the name, was Uma Flowers Lunenburg LLC.
Look at that.
Yeah.
Well, if they don't, if Uma Flowers doesn't object, I'm not going to fight hard on this one.
So then I would, if there's no other comments or suggestions for modification, I would entertain a motion that we agree with it as we have it presented with modifications and blue lines in our Google Drive.
I move to approve the host agreement, host community agreement with Uma Flowers Lunenburg LLC.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Okay, thank you. I will contact them tomorrow.
Now, to all the new people, this is the fun part of the meeting, where we get to do the annual license renewals. Where do we have such renewals? Are they?
It's a whole folder, very top.
Just do.
All right.
I had a memo from Elaine.
Let's look at the memorandum first. So you have, tonight, we have a list of licensees that have met all the requirements for renewal. So next week, there'll be another list presented that have issues pending, that have not been, that have not, such as not having the required documents for safety inspection for their alcohol license, or not providing the required certificate of good standing. And then there are some issues with some outstanding companies that she's noted that I'm not, you know, these are being worked out, so I'll just leave them at that. So the ones that I will be reading tonight are ones that have passed. Now, in the past, there are five documents, falling under alcohol license renewals, auto dealer and limousine license renewals, common victual license renewals, miscellaneous license renewals, and weekday entertainment license renewals. Unless there's an objection, I will go, we'll approve them all en masse per section, so I'll go through the ones for like alcohol. If there's anything you want to pull out, and you want to discuss individually? Okay, so for the 2022 alcohol license renewals, we have Iron Corporation doing business as Hilltop Farms on 1 Main Street. It is a package store, wine and malt. American Graffiti Inc. doing business as American Graffiti, 113 Summer Street Restaurant, all alcohol license. Carol A. and Henry A. Baker doing business as Baker's Whalem Variety at 423 Electric Ave, package store, wine and malt. Central Mass Garden Center doing business as Central Mass Gardens, 621 Chase Road, package store, wine and malt. Elena's Gourmet Grocery Inc. doing business as Elena's Gourmet Grocery, 1 Main Street, number eight, package store, all alcohol license. Genghis Inc. doing business as Jack's Country Variety at 1353 Massachusetts Avenue, package store, wine and malt. Global Montello Group Corporation doing business as Honey Farms, number 3829, at 134 Leominster Shirley Road, package store, wine and malt. Lanny Inc. doing business as Lanny Orchards, 294 Chase Road, package store, wine and malt. Lunenburg Zetas Inc. doing business as Bad Larry's, 1 Main Street, number four, restaurant, all alcohol. Embers Lounge and Restaurant LLC doing business as Embers Pizzeria, 84 Lakefront Drive, restaurant, all alcohol. Sir Jude's LLC doing business as Lunenburg Liquors, 433 Electric Avenue, package store, all alcohol. Settlers Crossing Enterprises Inc. doing business as Settlers Pub, 994 Northfield Road, general on-premise, all alcohol. And Victory Distributors LLC doing business as Hannaford Supermarket and Pharmacy, number 8388, at 333 Massachusetts Avenue, package store, all alcohol. I entertain a motion on those alcohol licenses.
Before we move, Mr. Chair, I just have a question to the town manager.
Yes.
One of the rocks is not on this list.
No, there's still outstanding issues.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to...
If they're not on here, either they're no, they no longer requested it, or there's issues.
Okay. Just wanted to, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion on these license renewals.
I move to approve the license renewals, 2022 alcohol license renewals as presented.
Have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. 2022 Auto Dealer/Limousine Auto Renewals. Recreational Dimensions Inc. doing business as Central Mass Power Sports, 19 Massachusetts Avenue, a Class 1 Auto Dealer. Joe Smalley Auto Sales Inc. doing business as Daiwu North, 30 Summer Street, Class 1 Auto Dealer. Colonial Imports West Inc. doing business as North End Mazda, 747 Chase Road, Class 1 Auto Dealer. Colonial Imports Inc. doing business as North End Subaru, 757 Chase Road, Class 1 Auto Dealer. Lunenburg Auto Center Inc. doing business as Lunenburg Auto Center, 36 Summer Street, Class 2 Auto Dealer. Mass Ave Motors Inc. doing business as Mass Ave Motors Inc., 381 Massachusetts Ave, Class 2 Auto Dealer. PNS Truck and Parts Inc. doing business as PNS Trucks and Parts Inc., 571 Chase Road, Class 2 Auto Dealer. Colonial Imports Inc., North End, doing business as North End Subaru, 44 Chase Road, Class 2 Auto Dealer. Carol A. and Henry A. Baker doing business as Baker's Towing, 421 Electric Ave, Class 2 Auto Dealer. John V. Gogan doing business as JG Service, 346 Electric Ave, Class 2 Auto Dealer. KB Agumon doing business as KB Cars LLC, 555 Chase Road, Class 2 Auto Dealer. Robert C. and Michael R. Lovewell doing business as RC Motors, 480 Electric Ave, Class 2 Auto Dealer. Baker Enterprises Company Inc. doing business as the Autobahn, 53 Chase Road, Class 2 Auto Dealer. Michael Bartonowski doing business as KC Sales and Service, 1312 Massachusetts Ave, Class 2 Auto Dealer.
I'd like to pull KC.
Okay, so anything we do will not include KC, we'll come back to, well, we'll talk about them first. Michael R. Chapdallane doing business at Chapdallane Auto Center, what's RR? For his address, but on Mass Ave. RR 199 Mass Ave, Class 3 Auto Dealer. For his address, but on Mass Ave. RR 199 Mass Ave, Class 3 Auto Dealer. PNS Trucks and Parts Inc. doing business as PNS Trucks and Parts Inc., 571 Chase Road, Class 3 Auto Dealer. Tom Crowns doing business as Lloyd's Limousine Service, PO Box 502, a limousine license. And First Choice Limousine and Transportation Service Inc., First Choice Limousine, 555 Chase Road, limousine license. So let's go to KC, what, what would you like to talk about?
Yeah, I mean, KC Sales located on a Mass Ave, their business is booming, they're doing a great job, they provide excellent, I think, service to the community. My concern is that they park a lot of vehicles on the lawns, and during the, during the business day. So I would like to know if we can get a determination from Mr. Bernie, or from the building-
Is there an enforcement officer on these licenses?
So as far as stoning, it would be the building commissioner.
Building commissioner, yeah. Regarding if they're in compliance with their site plan. Because I, I can't imagine that cars that need work, that it's okay to park them on, on grass.
No, I gotta believe that that is probably against-
Yeah.
-what their plan is.
But usually, I mean, my, since they happen to be located near my house, I drive by there often, and they, they usually during business hours, there's not, there's usually not a speck of grass in front of their building, they usually just fill it up with vehicles. So I would just like to know if they're in compliance. I would assume that they're not, maybe something could be stated to them. So maybe we can revisit KC next week?
Sure. Can we get, can we get KC to check out KC?
I think, I think so, yes.
All right, so let, we'll pull them out, so KC is not part of this motion. So I'd entertain a motion on the 2022 Auto Dealer License Auto Renewals as presented, excluding KC Sales and Services, which we will take up, a 1312 Mass Ave, which we will take up next week.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, but, you just did. Any second?
Second.
Okay. Well, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, rolling along. Common Vic Licenses, 2022. That's where I've become acquainted with all the owners and the names that they're doing businesses. AJD's Cafe LLC doing business as Lunenburg Dyna, 324 Electric Ave, Unit 3. American Graffiti Inc. doing business as American Graffiti, 113 Summer Street. BBK Group LLC doing business as Bangkok Hill, 177 Massachusetts Ave. Lunenburg Zetas Inc. doing business as Bad Larry's, One Main Street, Number 4. Carol A. and Henry A. Baker, Baker's Whalen Variety at 423 Electric Ave. White Farm Limited doing business as Cherry Hill Ice Cream, 826 Lemmister Road. Conrad Cafe Inc. doing business as Dippin' Donuts, 455 Massachusetts Ave. Neshoba Valley Donuts LLC doing business as Duncan Donuts at 134 Lemmister Shirley Road. Embers Lounge and Restaurant LLC doing business as Embers Pizzeria, 84 Lakefront Drive. Victory Distributors LLC doing business as Hannaford Supermarkets, Supermarket and Pharmacy, Number 8388, 333 Mass Ave. Iron Corporation doing business as Hilltop Farms, One Main Street. Global Montello Group Corporation doing business as Honey Farms, Number 3829, 134 Lemmister Shirley Road. Genghis Inc. doing business as Jack's Country Variety, 1353 Massachusetts Avenue. Lanny Orchards doing business, Lanny Orchards Inc. doing business as Lanny Orchards, 294 Chase Road. Lunenburg Gas and Market LLC doing business as Lunenburg Gas and Market, 400 Electric Ave. Yatim Central Convenience Lunenburg doing business as Lunenburg Golf, 451 Mass Ave. Presto Pizza Inc. doing business as Pretzo, Presto Pizza, 429 Electric Ave. Settlers Crossing Enterprises Inc. doing business as Settlers Pub, 994 Northfield Road. JD Enterprises Inc. doing business as Shady Point Beach and Campgrounds, 701 Reservoir Road. Alan Souza doing business as Stella's Coffee Shop, 466 Electric Avenue. Jonathan Fournette doing business as Voyage Nutrition, 5 Summer Street, Number 10. And Whalen Gas Service doing business as Whalen Gas, One Whalen Road. So I entertain a motion on those common victual licenses for 2022.
So moved.
To approve.
Okay, moved to approve, and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None. Miscellaneous, okay, this is getting shorter. So, Mark Testa doing business as Lakeview Driving Range, 15 car Ave, which is a driving ra, a base golf driving range. Carol A. and Henry A. Baker, Baker's Whalen Variety, 423 Electric Ave, an automatic amusement device, they have three. Whalen Gas doing business as Whalen Gas Service, One Whalen Road, they have two automatic amusement devices. American Graffiti Inc. doing business as American Graffiti, 113 Summer Street, a jukebox license. And Lunenburg Zetas Inc. doing business as Bad Larry's, One Main Street, Number 4, jukebox license. I would entertain a motion to approve these as read.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Well, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, I'm just trying to keep this moving along here. Weekday Entertainment License Renewals. There's only two here. How come we have three rows and it's numbered one, two, and four? Anyway, American Graffiti Inc. doing business as American Graffiti, does American Graffiti have every license we have to offer? They need some auto licenses. American Graffiti Inc. doing business as American Graffiti, 113 Summer Street, for a weekly entertainment license, weekday entertainment license. And Lunenburg Zetas Inc. doing business as Bad Larry's, One Main Street, Number 4, also weekday entertainment license. I would entertain a motion regarding approval of these two licenses as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right, wow. Approval of minutes of November 2nd, 2021. Has everybody read them? Anybody have any comments? Any changes? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of November 2nd, 2021.
I move to approve the minutes of November 2nd, 2021 as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? None. All right, we've got lots of, well, not lots, but big piles of warrants.
That relates to the renewals for the liquor. That can probably wait until next meeting.
Oh, this is the signing party, right?
No, boy.
Yes, that's the signing party.
This is the signing party we have after the meeting.
Yeah.
We'll just set them up, and we'll just start passing them along. All right, we won't do that now.
This one, so you can sign this. This is a licensee that is not renewing their liquor license, I think it's Bangkok Hill, not renewing their, just their liquor license.
Okay, so they're doing food, all right. So, well, all right, well, we can sign all of that later.
Please don't-
Warrants. All right. So this is a accounts payable, not accounts payable, this payroll in the amount of $998,301.51.
It's connected.
So all one, one?
Two.
Oh, okay. Hold on a second. Oh. Payroll deductions in the amount of $728,470.86. Be in decent shape to be a selectman to move these back along. And lastly, an accounts payable in the amount of $333,226.33. There's a lot of threes in there. Okay. Committee reports. Mr. Dwyer?
MJTC has a meeting tomorrow at 2:30 PM via Zoom. I'm gonna try and attend. It may conflict with some professional meetings, so I'll catch as much as I can.
Mr. Franco?
No committee reports.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, just one quick. I was not at the last library meeting, but I did join them for the first 15 minutes while they were discussing personnel. The library, you know, has spent the better part of the last couple of months putting together Muir's Annual Evaluation. Muir is the library director. Overwhelmingly, the library is so impressed by Muir, they're very satisfied with his work, with his focus on the community, they're just, they're, they really are just thrilled. They did somewhat of a comp survey to look at how his pay compares to other communities. I provided them with, with some feedback that they, that it would be helpful when they're going through these things to, to reach out to the town manager, to engage labor council, to assist them with their comp surveys. In my opinion, was that some of what they were looking at wasn't really comparable. Overwhelmingly, you know, and I also gave them the feedback when they were looking at pay rates, that, you know, there's a lot of variables, you don't know if someone's been on the job for 25 years, or if someone's been on the job for one month, that that data just wasn't there. And that, and to make sure that they leave enough room to give their employee space to grow with the town, and not to, and that my, that was my recommendation to them, was to give them space to grow, and that they have to think about the full budget and how it all fits into it. But ultimately, they approved his, they approved his evaluation, he got high marks across the board, and then they also are looking to sign a contract with him, a multi-year, he was on one-year contracts. And I advised them that most department heads, and including the town manager, not a department head, but have three-year contracts, that that tends to be more standard when you have a stable employee. And, and my understanding is that they're moving in that direction for a three-year contract, and that they're looking to increase his pay, so that he will land closer to the middle of the percentile, slightly above it, rather than in the bottom, which is where he currently sits. So, that was the gist of their, of the meeting that I was in on, and, yep.
Okay. Capital planning met yesterday, because we couldn't meet before this meeting, because it was the long meeting. We had the DPW Director presenting all the facilities projects, as well as vehicle projects, and road projects. So there was, it was a two-hour meeting, very good, good presentation by DPW Director Oliver. And the next steps for the capital planning is, now that we've heard from all the departments, is to start ranking them and evaluating and prioritizing them. So we'll be meeting the next couple Tuesdays before our meeting's here, and then we'll be off for the holiday, and then in January, we'll do the finalization, and by, I think our goal is by the second Tuesday in January, have the final list to the town manager, so she can present her feedback, and then present it to the select board and to the finance committee. So that's where that is right now. And the FinCom is meeting this Thursday, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, we will be meeting, we do not have a meeting on the 28th.
We skipped action.
Action items, yes.
Action items, sorry. You have action items.
We have action items.
I'd like to revisit one. I brought up, two weeks back, I brought up the senior tax relief goal, and I wanted to do that this time with, put a little more meat on the bones. And in the interest of advancing that goal, I, I'm proposing the formation of a, a senior tax relief committee to comprise, or to include two members from this board, to work with the town manager and finance director, to consider factors, model scenarios, and periodically report back to the full select board on, on where we are, and, you know, so we have something to grind on as, as a whole board. And also, along with that, I'm offering, if the board ultimately is so inclined to serve on that committee, so.
So it's just a subcommittee of this?
Yes, yes.
Let's not vote on it tonight, because it was just brought up, and obviously wasn't in the agenda, so let's put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
To discuss that, and then everybody can, else who wants to, can put their hat in the ring.
I think on the 21st, so our meeting schedule is next weekend, 21st, so we will be meeting both of those nights, we will not have a meeting on the 28th, that we wouldn't normally anyway. And on the 21st, maybe we'll have a workshop, well, part of our meeting will be an open workshop like we did tonight about that goal.
Okay.
Kick that off, if everybody's okay with it.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
I have two action items, I think, maybe there's more, my, yep, there's a few more. The first was, do we have the results of the survey that was done on Hickory Hills regarding the potential violation for conservation property?
The survey?
The land survey.
The land survey.
Oh, the Townsend Harbor? No, not, no, not that I'm aware of. I just asked Mr. Oliver about that as well.
Okay. And then, the other thing, Mr. Chair, we can add to our next agenda discussion about designating a student liaison to work with, the student, to work with the schools, not so much like the school committee, but how we talked about this when Lisa LeBlanc came and gave the presentation that we would have a liaison that would work with them for the civics kind of component, to discuss that at our next meeting and designate a liaison.
From here to the school?
Um, so-
Which way is the liaison?
Yeah, our liaison from this board to work with Lisa and other kind of key members of the school regarding that collaboration on their needs, and how we can support the civics program. That, yeah, at our, at our meeting with them, we kind of left off, as I understood, saying that we would designate someone to work with them.
Okay, we can put that on.
On the left foot.
I'd have to lose then.
And then, last question is to the town manager on the new software that the DPW has employed for managing facilities, as far as how that is working. I know it's very heavy on the front end of loading a lot of data, but just curious as to how that's working out.
I'll have to check with the DPW Director, I don't know.
Okay. There's two parts to that, and the second part of that is also, do they, do they intend on using the system to allow members of the public to be able to submit work orders as it relates to public buildings and property?
I would assume no.
I would assume no, too.
No?
Yeah.
No, as an example would be like, you know, one, a lot of the new software, you basically put like a QR code in like, a public areas, public spaces, so that way, if, if an employee or someone from the public comes into a town building and notices that the bathroom isn't working, that it's a quick way to kind of send it over, you could submit a work order, not something that's like posted online, but it's usually something that's like physically inside the building, that is, or someone using a handicap ramp that maybe staff don't use, but they use, and it, some people use it, that's, this is the question if they plan on doing it. I'm not recommending that they do, I'm just asking if they plan on doing it.
I think we're not there yet.
If I was the DPW Director, I wouldn't want people submitting open order tickets to the public. I'd say, report them to us, and let us look at them, because first you have to validate them for it.
Well, typically, that's like what it's called, as far as like how it's reported. Usually it's reported as a request for work or a work order, but.
Internally, yeah, I think that would be the goal of the software.
Okay. I know, it takes like six months to get that stuff going, so. All right, thank you.
Public comment from the public. Anybody still on Zoom?
Let's see. Nope.
No. Any public comment, final public comment for the board?
None.
None.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good night, everyone. See you next Tuesday in the interim. Take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.